We will call a meeting to order and it's now seven over three.
She's going to be 12 seconds.
Yeah. Did you get my introduction or should I start over? So I'm Catherine Bembarras, I'm the School Building Committee Chair. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are going to do a presentation, so at the end of the presentation, we'll have questions and answers. Okay, so the first order of business is calling the order, obviously, and second order of business is our presentation. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent schools.
Good evening, I'm Mike. I'm Phil Stevens, I'm the Superintendent Schools. So just to share the format of the meeting and hopefully folks online can hear well. I will, Scott Goldman and I will do the full presentation and then we will open the floor for questions. Tonight's presentation will be posted to the SPC website tomorrow, so this full presentation will be out publicly. This is the first full presentation by the SPC. It has the up-to-date, most up-to-date information that we have and we will be planning future presentations for the public and feedback sessions at our next regularly scheduled meeting. There are index cards on the corners of the bleachers and pencils for you to write questions on if you're in the room. You can drop them on the desk over there and a select woman will collect them. Or if you just want to put questions in at any time. We will also allow people to ask questions on the microphone or anybody that wants to stand at the microphone. There's a sign, there's not a lot of people in the room today, but there's a sign up there with a pad, a yellow pad. For the folks that are attending online, we have a chat function open that will send a direct message to the organizer of the meeting and we will address those when we get to the questions as well. We will answer as many questions as we can tonight. We might not have all of the answers, but we will, you know, get as many done as we can. Future presentations, I'll tell you right off the start, will include bonding, information, tax implications, and we will be sharing the questions posed tonight and providing answers online as well. So without further ado. So the School Building Committee is charged with defining a consolidated preschool through grade school. That means our educational needs. The full SPC chart is online, you can also see, it's in the corner, it's on the corner of the slide, just so you can get an idea of what it looks like. It's not intended for you to read it, just to see when you're looking for what it is online. And at this point, the committee is between two options. Completing an addition alteration project at Paul Memorial School or building a new school on a new site. The consolidation should provide 21st century learning opportunities and needs to be a school that has flexible learning spaces, addresses building deficiencies, updates heating, cooling, ventilation, that reduces operational expenses by going into one school and provides the latest security and safety measures. A 21st century school is learner-centered. It is adaptable. It sets children up to succeed in a world where more than half the jobs they'll have in their careers don't exist yet. Students need to learn in an environment that is student-centered with relevant real-life learning opportunities that enhance their ability to communicate, collaborate, and think critically. We currently, as you know, have two schools, Center School and Paul School. Center School was built in 1953 with additions in 1959 and 1980 and has a total square footage of approximately 30,000 square feet. It serves preschool through grade four with two, currently with 220 students in 14 home room classes. It is located on Old Farmers Road and on eight acres. Paul Memorial School was built in 1922 with additions in the 1960s, there was actually a couple, in 1980 and has a total square footage of approximately 63,000 square feet. It currently serves 175 students in grades five through eight and operates a middle school model, which basically just means students rotate classes. Paul School is technically owned by the town of Wellington through a quitclaim deed as long as the building is used as a school. Paul School is obviously located at Route 32, you may have here, so you know, and is on approximately 15 acres. Both Center and Paul Schools have significant needs. Center School needs updated ventilation. It has minimal air conditioning with no central air in any of the classrooms. We need a partial roof replacement, the upper wing was done in 1314 and the upper wing has the original single pane windows. The upper wing is not ADA accessible. It has no lift or no elevator to get up there. Most classrooms have very limited power outlets and that usually means one in the front of the room and one in the back. The plumbing and cabinetry needs to be replaced. The brick on the exterior of the building needs to be repointed. These are just some of the examiners of some of the projects that need to happen inside our school. Paul School has similar challenges. Many areas of HMS have no ventilation whatsoever and the areas that do need to be updated. Very few spaces have central air conditioning and no classrooms have AC unless it is an individual units. The band room is lucky enough just to receive a new mini-split and the library has central air. Those are the main, main two spaces. HMS needs a full roof replacement and brick repointing as well. The rooms again lack electrical outlets and original plumbing exists in many of the areas of the building. HMS has subterranean classrooms with basement-style windows and there are some with no windows at all. There is a dark narrow hallway that connects the east side of the building to the west side of the building. You'll see a picture of that later. The elevator needs modernization and the site is not fully ADA compliant. And last thing I want to say is HMS is 50 feet from Route 32, which is extremely busy as you all know and if you know me, it's why I start my morning, every morning, standing on the sidewalk to try and slow people down. Some photos of the buildings. So this is obviously Paul School. You see the server closet right here. That server closet has no air conditioning, it's meant to be a temperature control, it is not. It is wide open and should be closed and secured and have its own ventilation. We leave the door open. You see the front of the building on Route 32 right there. You see the stage, which is the back of the stage back here. Again, Route 32 with a big truck going down the road. This is a ramp we've been talking about often, there's actually repairs being done on that ramp tomorrow. It needs to be replaced, that is how students, that are dropped off where they enter the building, but it is also the accessible ramp for students to enter the building. The crosswalk again, the cross Route 32. And just an example of a classroom that's on the lower level with exterior doors that are out. That I believe is a classroom that used to be a garage. This is a subterranean and windowless classroom. Here's the, the below grade and this classroom here has no windows. The windows in this classroom actually overlook the cafeteria. We have narrow hallways such as this, it's called the single load hallway. It's really meant for one-way traffic, but it's the main hallway between both sides of the building to get east and west. That's what connects to like our art room and some other spaces. We have windows that need to be replaced. Some of the bathrooms that are significantly outdated and very narrow, they're not ADA accessible. This is the boiler room at HMS. Has one new boiler in the age mechanicals. You see the attic door, this is the attic up to get to the upstairs by the library. This is how you have to access it. It is a set of stairs that is basically a ladder that just goes straight up. Not great for doing work. The locker rooms are in the middle, the lockers are where things on CIP plan to be replaced. And these are the stairs on the corner of the building. People have asked, why can't you just put all seven school students into Paul School? This is one of the reasons. They have to be on the floor to have, for exit discharge straight outside for younger students, certain grades. These stairs, I think now, it's a smaller space, but they're very large. So Center School. These are obviously some folks from Center, you see a classroom that looks great down here. That's actually an old garage. That is under the gymnasium at Center School, so when it's basketball season and they're dribbling basketballs, that's what you hear. But this is currently intervention. You see the front of the building and the main office and then entrance to the building. And in a 21st century building, this area would have a 20, a double desk. And basically what that means is you buzz people into one section of the building. You can check their credentials, you can sign them in, and then you can buzz them into the main section of the building, the interior of the building, that does not exist in either of the buildings at this point in time. Right now, you would also want direct access to the office, so you would buzz into here and you would want to be able to have direct access to the office staff. Center School has a small gym. The stairs go to the upper wing. And when you look at this picture right here, this section right here used to have a lift. That lift was how a student in a wheelchair would access the upstairs. When that lift needed to be replaced, it didn't be ADA, it was fully removed and that was the end of that. So now, if you want to access upstairs and you're in a wheelchair, you have to go outside, go up the sidewalk and back if you just go right here. How do we do that, you ask probably? We can programmatically put classrooms, every classroom on a lower level for them to be accessible for students, which means on the lower level, I have a pre-K, K, one, two, three, and four. All the unit of my arts classes, the cafeteria, so that those students don't ever have to go upstairs. Problem with that is if my co-teacher, who's another third-grade teacher, is upstairs, they're very collaborative. So it's one of those things that for ADA accessibility, it's really a challenge. You see the staff workroom and there's odd spaces here. There's glass and then like an office space and same in here. So this is the workroom, but there's odd spaces like that in both buildings that really eat up square footage. You see a hallway, we share a music room here, this is a shared space and this is one of those original single pane windows. The last picture that I want to point out is the drainage, this is something that when a grain's real heavy, it's just the drain, it's not there. It seems simple a bit, but some of that is all the way around the school and the sidewalks are slated to be done. The mechanical room at Center. We used to have holding tanks for water, they're no longer used, but they remain. We have a relatively new boiler, but we still have pneumatics in sections of the buildings which are obviously outdated and should be replaced. You see the stairway down to the maintenance area into the boiler, believe it or not. My mother used to teach this room downstairs, I didn't take a picture of it, I couldn't share that. As a storage area now, but it's a space that, you know, to send any materials downstairs or sending custodians down and playing stairs to store materials. You can see the clock and PA system. That is not the original clock, that is just a replacement that we have to change individually when we want to do any time changes. They're not consistent classroom to classroom. That full system of clock, PA, alert system is on CIP plan, it needs to be replaced. And then you see the fire panel, which was already approved, is in the works to be replaced. And you see the classroom cabinetry and plumbing. This is an example of a very bad one. This is a conversation that the Board of Ed just had last night. This is something that a lot of the classrooms where there's no shut-off valve, this breaks and a lot of plumbers don't want to touch this. We have to shut off water to the entire building. Last thing is a single conference room. It's reasonable, but it's small. To get this far in the process for the SPC, we have gathered a lot of information. The Board of Ed had Friar Architecture complete a facility study in 2017 with pricing and we learned that that pricing only accounted for 68,098 square feet and was not connected to an ed spec, things we learn as we go through this process. We have facilitated a general community survey in 2019 and the Board of Ed did that and I completed various public presentations similar to this one tonight and with questions and answer periods in 2019 at locations all over town. It was a traveling show and that was on behalf of the Board of Education. The School Building Committee has new enrollment projections. You can see that were done by Dr. Peter Prouda. We have hired Colliers International as our homeowners project manager, Scott Hellman sitting here and really to help navigate this complex process. We have drafted high-level exceptional plans for Paul School based upon the educational specifications. Developed budgets and timelines and schedules for the options. Completed a comprehensive assessment of the property. If we move to a new school on a new site and one has been identified and the committee will share that information tonight. And we completed a Phase One environmental study on that property. Part of this process is a significant amount of work with the states, with state meetings and grant requirements. And you work with the Office of School Construction Grants and Review. And if you hear OSEGGR, this is the grant place, this is what we're talking about in the state. And that's really your work with them, so the town can receive funding for a project that qualifies. Again, whether it's a new building or it's an alteration extension of Paul School. And sorry for the terminology alteration extension, it's exactly what the state calls it, it's what we would qualify for. We have had two preliminary meetings with OSEGGR and basically share our general information. Where are we at in the process and allow them to ask questions. We have learned that the state is encouraging consolidation, which is favorable to this project into Wellington. The challenges behind this though is the state will not comment on which projects they would support. Whether it's a renovation or a new school on a new site. That's going to be left to the community and feedback in the SPC. You will see this evening that because we are consolidating schools, we exceed the square footage amount to receive maximum reimbursement. This has been a topic of our conversation, stated. We can apply for a space waiver, which is connected to square footage, but we're unable to do that until our grant application goes in after the fact. Not so helpful, we've shared that with OSEGGR, it's the way that business happens. I will share that OSEGGR has verbally confirmed that their space standard calculation that's used for, to determine our square footage, it doesn't adequately address moving to a pre-K through eighth grade building. It's different than just building the high school and then building a new high school. It's basically apples to apples. We're going from two buildings to one and they've, they've heard it and they've recognized that we've said this just doesn't work in your calculations. So there's a very long process and complex process for the school construction grant. If the community passes a project at referent, either project, a grant application is submitted to OSEGGR. You're doing that for reimbursement and it has to be done by June of each year. So we hope to do that by June of 2023 or you have to wait until the following June, which will again be June of 2024. Even though you submit your application in June, you don't get a response until February. Scott, February. So you get put on the priority list in December, but you actually get the nod beyond. And so that the funding would be in July of that year. So if you apply in June of 23, you would learn sometime around February, your funding would be in July one of that year. And that doesn't, that means you would use those funds. OSEGGR determines your reimbursement rate and some of that is statutory or is it, it's a couple of lawmakers?
It's, it's.
The base.
Your changes are based on, this is public for other municipalities.
So you can see every town's reimbursement rate and it's, it's changes every year and I'll talk more about that at home. But it's based upon, your reimbursement rate is based upon the number of students that you have and the square footage that you need, so it's a little complicated. But they use the, your highest student population in eight years. Our projections, which you'll see shortly, show that in the school year 2324, that would have our highest projection in eight years, it would be 419 students. That is a, someone that you hire to do that work. They have a calculation basically where they multiply the number of students by square feet to determine that maximum square footage they would reimburse a town for and that's without a waiver. Our maximum space standard calculation for reimbursement is 57,564 square feet based on the 419 students. The state also has a calculation for land and it's based on enrollment again and they would anticipate us having approximately 19.2 acres for a new school on a new site. That's what they would be looking around. So this is a slide from the enrollment study. It's, an enrollment study is a requirement of the process and it shows the highest projected enrollment at 419 students, there's that red circle over here in the school year 2324. And we had hired, the School Building Committee hired Dr. Peter Prouda and he's one of the state's leading experts on enrollment projections. And this was part of his projections that was presented to us. It was a meeting that was recorded, so you can see his full presentation if you'd like on YouTube. And this is a sample space standard portion to give you a sense of how all this is calculated. It shows that when you're over your square footage, you get penalized on your reimbursement rate. So this shows that with a projected high population of 419 students in a maximum square footage of 57,654 square feet compared to what we have right now in our educational specifications. This one shows 82,834. You are reduced because you're over that 57,000 square feet. That is our challenge right now, we're consolidating to one school. That was the bulk of our conversation with OSEGGR the last time we met. So how does the state reimbursement work? This, the state has loads of rules about reimbursement, what qualifies, what does not qualify, including not providing reimbursement for work over the property line. And basically what that means is if we had a lot next door and wanted to build a school there and there was no electricity there and no water there, you need to get that there. That's on your dime. It's not reimbursed until it hits that property line. That's where the reimbursement would come in. They also have different reimbursement rates and one is for new construction and one is for a renovation. If you don't qualify, there's again, all sorts of this renovation status statute here. If you don't qualify for renovation, they then look at alteration extension. So it's not just as simple as this is the percentage. You have to demonstrate for renovation status that renovation is also less expensive than building a new school. If you cannot demonstrate that, OSEGGR will reduce your reimbursement rate. That is statutory as well, correct Scott?
If you just, if you don't qualify for, like, nothing, you need to do some repair or a replacement, does not qualify. So if a renovation, an alteration extension project, if you don't get renovation status, good portion of that work, replacement or repair, maybe just a light and plumbing, so forth, does not qualify for reimbursement.
Remember that when we get to the prices, it will become clear.
Phil, you just repeatedly said, I can't really hear Scott online.
Scott, you have the mic.
Everything else I've said.
For a center mic. Spencer, can you just hand that mic to him? Spencer is our amazing girl director at Paul School, came in and helped set this up for us, thank you Spencer.
So the way the state looks at renovation status, if you don't get renovation status, anything that's a repair or a replacement, such as replacing lighting fixtures, replacing plumbing, would not qualify for state reimbursement. It's ineligible construction, eligible construction, ineligible construction. So when you're doing an alteration extension project, so if we do a project here in this building, alter this building, put an extension on for the lower grades to bring Center School up to this site, you have to prove to the state that this project would be cheaper than building a new school. That's part of the, really the main requirement of that applying for renovation status. So you start out in alteration extension where everything that's a repair or replacement doesn't qualify. It's not eligible construction for the state to reimburse them. If you can prove to them that it's cheaper to build, to do an alteration extension versus building new, you put in a package, they approve or they will review it, hopefully approve renovation status. At that point, then all of the items that are altered, are renovation replacement, again, light fixtures, plumbing, those types of things, so forth, then would become eligible construction. And then you take the eligible construction and you multiply it by the reimbursement rate. And again, as Phil noted, reimbursement rate is complicated, it's based on building size. We would certainly look to try and always maximize that, so there may be a space waiver involved in that as well. So our calculations right now are, you'll see that later, is how that plays into the whole center.
Thanks. So as part of this process, the Board of Education had to develop educational specifications. It's a fancy term for basically what programs you're going to have in your preschool or graduating school and it adds some of those details. The ed specs, as you'll hear them called, ed specs, continue the programs that we currently have, the Board approved them last night. But it really ends up providing a 21st century learning environment. Again, contemporary technologies, security, safety, ventilation, heating and cooling and that means building code requirements. And that includes accessibility for all students and staff, community members. Part of providing a 21st century school is also making sure that the physical environment supports our goal for students to be able to communicate effectively, think critically, collaborate and show care, that's our portrait of the graduate corner. Classroom spaces should be flexible and have furniture that promotes the attributes of our portrait of the graduate. In my portrait of the graduate presentation to the Board, there's a picture of a classroom of rows of desks, those rows of desks, exactly like those over there. And a 21st century classroom is very different and you'll see pictures of that as we go forward. Here we go. So we're going to get into the ed spec portion now that identifies the square footage. These are areas within the academic classroom sections, including classrooms, storage, breakout areas and resource rooms. Breakout areas are spaces outside the classroom. They are built in various locations, they're part of the hallway that allows students to work again outside the classroom. They're an extension of the classroom and they can be used for small groups or one-to-one instruction. Breakout spaces are flexible and allow students to work individually or in groups. You can see, this is an example of a breakout space, just a little bump out where students can work and staff. this is an example of a breakout space, just a little bump out where students can work and staff. This is an example of a more elaborate breakout space, which also has a whiteboard. Resource rooms, or it's a flex space in parentheses, are similar to breakout areas, but they're actual rooms. They're smaller rooms that are quiet spaces for instruction. Think about pulling a small group for intervention or other small group learning opportunities. Resource rooms are not identified specifically for special education students, but may be utilized, they can be utilized for special education service delivery, but that's not their only intent. The top and bottom pictures there are examples of those breakout spaces. While the picture in the middle is an example of a twenty-first century classroom with flexible seating. It's movable, has technology and the whiteboards. And you can see this classroom, this, this style of desk can go from a group of four or five to two to one. And they're on wheels and the intent is that you can move it quickly to different formations to promote collaboration and communication within the room. These are the specialized rooms that include science, steam, art, oral language, chorus, et cetera. The picture at the top is an example of the science lab or steam room. Research shows the importance of natural light. There is loads of research on this in a school building. And you can see this space has plenty of. The middle picture is, is an example of an instrumental music classroom. It's pretty elaborate. Yes, I know. And the bottom picture is an example of an art room. Again, these spaces are bright. They help promote communication and collaboration. Probably not as flexible for a steam space simply because of the flats. And probably the same for art, although you could set up the same type of setup. The square footage that's down the side, the totals are all added together. And again, I publish this and it just shows the numbers. So two science labs, two rooms, twelve hundred square feet each for a total of twenty-four hundred square feet. Most of those are relatively standard for size when you are doing an Ed spec. If you were to compare this to Mansfield or South Windsor, the majority of these are going to be in that same exact ballpark. Special education. These are spaces to provide legally required services. The majority of our services are provided in the general education classroom. But we do have a need for pull-out instruction. It's required by a student's individualized education plan. And that's what these spaces for the most part are. The bottom picture is an example of an occupational physical therapy room. This, we have a swing like this in center school. It was professionally mounted by our, the climbing, Mansfield was downed or placed. They came and did it for us. The top picture is not necessarily connected to special education. I put it in here. Just a, could be a break space, but I thought it was outstanding. That's actually outside. It is a cover courtyard that could be utilized for instruction or recess when it's raining. Again, unique spaces. That's the type of opportunity you get to consider when you are doing Ed specs. And that middle classroom is just an example of what a pull-out space might look like. That might be a little bit big, but you get the sense of what it would be. As far as the Ed specs for the administrative area. Typical offices, two conference rooms, a nurse's station, storage, pretty normal items. The top picture shows a front office counter that works for elementary and middle school students. If you moved elementary students into Paul School today and tried to go to the office, they couldn't see over the counter. Those are things that you want to consider when you have the span of pre-K to eighth grade in a consolidated school. The picture in the middle does show a double vestibule, which I have spoken about. This is actually a large one. So they can't get into the remainder of the building. And these are two pictures side by side. Just to give you a sense, they come in, they're buzzed in here, they talk through the window. This is probably ballistic doors, ballistic glass, and then they are buzzed into the building if they need to. You don't always have a need to buzz people into the buildings. The bottom picture is a conference room. Again, just the purpose there is just to show natural light. Tons of research behind it. Spencer, take a breath. There's a beautiful picture there right now. This, these are the common areas that include the library, the cafeteria, gym, locker rooms and auditorium. The top picture is an example of a flexible space that could be used for classes or meetings. And has lots of natural light flowing into the space. Same goes for the cafeteria. Again, loads of natural lights. We saw that when we went to the new Birch Grove. You see the incredible auditorium. That is a nice auditorium. That is in Connecticut. That's not quite, I think, what our expectation is, but it's quite a nice auditorium. And then the bottom picture is an example of an updated library piece set. The board has had, Board of Education has had lots of conversations. Their recommendation was a new school on a new site with an auditorium. That was their recommendation. The charge of school building committee is to figure that out consolidating pre-K to eighth grade school. What the school building committee has to do now is determine how to best move forward with feedback from the public. There is consideration that you could still do a project and have an alternate as, and with the auditorium as an alternate. Because it takes a lot of square footage. One of the items that the Board of Ed has requested is a full auditorium. You are currently sitting in a gymnasium that seats approximately six hundred people. If you bet to one of our performances here, we fill them. This auditorium would only seat between four and five hundred people. And the idea was to provide an auditorium that could do some of the, what we can do in here if there's a new site. The challenge is, Scott, I have had many conversations about this. The state will only give you so much money for an auditorium up to a percentage. Half of the student population. So picture an auditorium for two hundred and ten students. Not even the size of those lectures, folks. So that was part of the conversation with the Board of Ed and this group will have to determine for. The last section of the educational specifications is the service areas engrossing factor. The walls, the corridors, the stairs. The Ed spec calls for updated I T, M D F and I D F rooms. We do not have a loading dock at either school right now. That would be important in the future. A twenty-first century building would have fire suppression. We do not have that either building. It would have significantly upgraded electrical service that meets code and state-of-the-art mechanical. You can see those things. Again, these pictures are examples of these types of updates. And again, natural light within the building. Purpose of those pictures. The total square footage for the Ed spec that the Board approved is eighty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four square feet. That includes an eight thousand square foot auditorium. Within the Ed spec, it clearly states, if an auditorium is not part of the project, we need to make sure that we build a gymatorium, what you have right here, or in a cafeteria, which is like a cafeteria stage connected to it. And that doesn't just take eight thousand square feet off because you're looking at probably sixteen hundred square feet of stage. So you're probably taking about sixty-four hundred square feet off if it was not a full auditorium. So the project options at this point, and just make the A on each of these stand for auditorium. At this point, again, new school on a new site or an addition alteration of Hall Memorial School. You can see options one and one A are a new building on a new site that is centrally located in town with and without an auditorium. And the second option is to renovate Paul School. Option two includes demolishing the existing locker rooms, which are right here, and the two-story academic wing. If you were standing on Route thirty-two facing the front of Hall Memorial School, it is the wing to the left that would be demolished. That is actually not part of the original building. And this is only a concept plan based upon Colliers. An architect could design something different. We would add a two-story addition to consolidate preschool in grade eight. Again, the level of entry and exit for younger students is important. And this option would have a small area for future expansion. You're, you have Route thirty-two on one side, you have the river in the back, you have a neighbor on one side, you have Lock and Stock on the other. Option two A would again demolish locker rooms, a two-story academic wing and add a two-story addition. But it would also add the auditorium. To be able to consider the option of building a new school on a new site, I'm going to use the word scour. I can't say that word strong enough. We scour the town for land. There were over a hundred and twenty public and private undeveloped parcels that were reviewed. We searched for land over nineteen usable acres with topography that would accommodate a school and fields. It should be land that is centrally located in town if possible. It should allow for safety vehicle and bus entrance and exit and have, again, that reasonable distance to utilities, which saves money. A site that allows for future expansion and has minimal impact to weapons is desirable. And lastly, a site that meets the Ed specs, that's really important. It's got to be what the Board of Education is looking for. The proposed site. This is what we have spent significant time in executive session. This is the first time we are announcing publicly what that property is. It is located on Glass Factory School Road. It is parcel twenty-four slash zero zero nine. The property on Buz Adamic and Glass Factory School Road. You can see the locations of center and hall schools on this map. In two thousand and nineteen, as part of pre-S P C, as part of my high-level review of properties in town, which was done in collaboration with the prior assistant zoning agent, she and I did a lot of work on this. We identified a variety of properties that would meet the acreage and topography requirements. The property on Glass Factory Road was one that was identified by me and that zoning agent in two thousand and nineteen. It's not new. After providing listed properties to Scott Pelman and Colliers and the school building committee, land assessment subcommittee, which is members of Mike Kuhn, Ralph Tulis and Gary Anderson, they completed their own evaluation of town properties and private parcels. A huge number of properties welcomed to Wellington were eliminated from the search because they were either a giant hill or they were wet. It was wet. They utilized a site evaluation matrix to rank properties that met those qualifications. They walked several properties, including the younger one property, which was purchased for a new school, but is not an appropriate site. The identified parcel on Glass Factory Road was by far the best parcel as determined by the school building committee. Chairman Vaveroz, subcommittee chair Mike Kuhn and Scott Pelman worked with the landowners. And as of tonight, we have a signed letter of intent to purchase the property in Port Knone here. Should a successful referendum happen where a new school on a new site is chosen, we are still pursuing two options. It just means we need to make sure we have land if we're going to consider a new option. The property has sixty-five acres and it is owned by the estate of Robert Woschinski and Mary Woschinski. You all know that name. First elected Woschinski was not part of the act of negotiations on behalf of the town or landowners and abstained, as she did this evening, from any votes pertaining to business related to the property. The negotiations began in April of twenty-two and after Mr. Woschinski's passing in August, they continued to work directly with Mr. Woschinski. The land was formally appraised and the landlord has agreed to sell the property for the appraised value of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The letter of intent that was signed does not require the town at this point to place a deposit on the property. It will not be purchased if a new school on a new site is not the option that's chosen. We have identified some advantages and disadvantages for each of these options. Options one and one A would provide a completely new facility with room for expansion. It would eliminate the four-year renovation process impact to students and staff. We would have separate field spaces for softball, baseball and soccer, the sports we offer for middle school. And we would also have room for expansion if desired. The cost is less than an alteration extension project at Hall School. And parking and parent drop-off would be improved. A disadvantage of building new is this building would be turned back to the Hall Foundation unless other arrangements were made. This is a general depiction. It is a general depiction. It is not what would be built. It's just giving you a sense of what a new school would look like on a property, on that property, on Glass Factory Road. Gives you a sense of location of the property as well. And I want to emphasize again, this is strictly a concept. It doesn't mean we're building a new building. It just means we have land if we go that route. And does not depict the actual design should the town approve a new school on a new site. Really, the purpose of this depiction is to give a general idea of how a school would feel to fit on the property. If you look at this, this one here, you can see Adamic is by Hilltop. River Road, you look down the hill here, seven-four Glass Factory. This is the property right here. If you recognize this, I believe this is Mansfield's new school. We just laid out what they were using because they're doing it next, next door for about approximately the same size. This is just a sketch to determine, will this fit on this property? That was the idea behind this. Here are the advantages and disadvantages of option two. We would maintain portions of H M S, including the original building. And I think that's work to town. And we would not have any site acquisition fees because we wouldn't need to buy any additional land. You're working with what you have. The disadvantages of an extension and alteration of Hall School include completing construction while occupying the building. This is something in super typical schools that you're going to hear me say. This is, it, it can be done. School districts do it, but it is a challenge. There is no room for expansion and school community members would still need to park across the road number thirty-two. It is a longer construction timeline. It is more expensive than building new. You would still have the exterior framing of a hundred-year-old building. And there is potential for hidden conditions that would be uncovered or could be uncovered during the alteration resulting in added project costs. that would be uncovered or could be uncovered during the alteration resulting in added project costs. I'm gonna show it right now, yeah. Oh, sorry. There is room, oh, sorry, this is, uh, in, in two, not two, I'm sorry, there is room for expansion. We'll show that up front here. So this is again a general depiction of what Hall School would look like with an extension alteration. You can see this wing of the building is now gone. That wing is that wing in front. It would be taken out. A new bus lane would be added to improve flow and additional parking would be added. Again, just like the other depiction, this is a concept. It's not a set. It's just to show how the plan could work. This is where the two-story addition would be in the back. This is kind of where that hill is, where there's, we did an outdoor concert here of COVID here. And this is your area for future expansion. At the front where that fifth and sixth grade wing is currently. Actually, it's, it's the entire academic wing, since the sixth upstairs and seventh and eighth downstairs. The advantages and disadvantages of option two A are basically the same as option two. The difference is that construction period will take longer because you have to build an auditorium. So I'm not gonna go through each of those individually, but again, instead of the, uh, open space now for expansion, that's exactly where the auditorium would go. And again, why do we say no room for expansion? Because you have neighbors on this side, you have the river on the back, you have weapons and lock and stock over here, and you have Route thirty-two on the front. You can also see, uh, Mr. Pelman here did an amazing job trying to squeeze in three overlapping fields for baseball, softball, and soccer. The next set of slides shows the construction phasing that would occur for options two and two A. We would have early site work with a new bus lane apartment. The upper athletic field would be leveled with the lower athletic field. I'll let that sink in. This lower section and upper section would be leveled to the same, same height. A new septic system would be built and the existing locker rooms would be demolished. This is again just to give you an idea of how this would work. Phase two would be to build a new two-story addition. You would live in the remainder of the building until that two-story addition is done. And at that point, you would then move in phase three, your grades five through eight into that addition so that we could renovate the existing building, including the nineteen twenty or twenty-two building section, the gymnasium, and the classroom addition. Phase four of the HMS addition alteration would be the demolition of the academic wing on the front, this right here. And lastly, if it were approved, you'd build the auditorium. At this point, you could consider, when the rest of the building is set, you could consider moving over your pre-k and fourth-grade students into the building. Or you would choose to leave it as is until all alternative are done. Again, if it's not part of the project, and then move them in at that point. The schedule for these projects is really important. They are, the schedules are built based on successful referendum, which we're planning for, hoping for March, uh, and in June twenty twenty-three, grant application to OSGR. Options one and one A are identical in the timeline as they could be completed within the same timeframe, with an opening in the fall of twenty twenty-six. And that's because you don't have to worry about students in the building. The duration for the option two and two A, that schedule requires the phasing so we can continue to occupy the building during that construction. Completion there would be for twenty twenty-seven, for the school, and twenty twenty-eight if it included an auditorium. So what does that look like? This is the construction timeline, the planning timeline, all the details for option one and one A. The red dotted line here, this is Mr. Pelman's work of art, um, is about where we are now. This schedule shows March referendum, an application in June of twenty twenty-three. It shows design work here through April twenty-four and final SPC and BOE approvals in June of twenty twenty-four. After all the bidding and award process, construction would take approximately twenty months to complete. Again, approximate. And again, anticipated opening would be fall of twenty-six. Would you like to add anything to that? Alright. This is the timeline for two and two A. And so you can, again, to the referendum, the, the application, and you're doing the phasing. And what happens here, all of these long green areas are those long phases that we talked about or where, so this is the auditorium, this is the, uh, can someone read that from here? Can you read that behind you a bit? Oh, that's the alteration extension. And that's the new construction. And the early site grab is all that more, the bus lane, the new septic area, all additional parking, all that. So again, this timeline is longer. Hit your mic.
Yeah, just briefly, the, the reason for the new septic, the only site package is the only area we identified as an area for an addition is where the current septic field is. So we can't build the addition until we build the new septic field, so early site, the site where the septic field leveling the fields that we have free better and the next phase of the addition, which was the phasing went until pre there.
So we have some really generic estimated operating, operating cost savings. Think about the Board of Education budget that they present each year. We believe that we will have an operational cost savings of moving into a consolidated building that we would see a budget savings of five hundred thirty-two thousand dollars as a result of that consolidation. I have said I protect this because I don't want staff to leave if nothing happens. So it's very simple of, of combinations of, of positions, moving into one building. You don't necessarily need all the staffing. You lose the benefits when they leave because of consolidation. You have now joint contract supplies and equipment, things that we double up on now, fire alarms. Right? All of those things are a double contract. You would have some energy savings. You would have some transportation savings because we would do one bus run, pre-k through fifth grade. You would operate on one schedule. And then, you can see the difference of the savings. So completing an alteration addition project at HMS or building a new building results in a significant number of projects being removed from the five-year capital improvement plan. This is not the CIP plan. This is the Board of Ed's version that we go through and we place items on, just Board of Education. This plan does not have all the projects that need to be completed at the schools. But you can see the items listed would cost the, the town close to three million dollars. And again, that doesn't include all the necessary items that would be added to CIP. The Board of Education, CIP committee are waiting to see the outcome of this work by the SPC before making any additions to the plan. It impacts reimbursement. As you know, we applied for a roof project for both buildings. The state stops us in our tracks because of the work with the SPC. If you're not going to remain in the building for a certain period of time, they won't give the reimbursement. If we remain in the buildings, we get the reimbursement. Some of that's on here. That's why you see, uh, certain projects qualify for reimbursement. This is, uh, older, but it still applies. Slides forty-four through forty-nine list items identified by the flyer study as part of the facility study for all schools. Should we remain in all schools? It's an important factor there. So when you look at this, provide an science and concrete base, uh, remove and replace seven thousand gallon septic tank by basketball court. Provide one water retention system for whole parking lots. All of these items were recommended not by Superintendent Board of Education, these or Colliers. This is the list that flyer identified as things that you need to make sure you take care of in the future should you remain in these buildings and it's pages. Some of them are smaller, replace, replace drinking fountains. Right? But so, some of these are significant. And when you get to the end and you look at the, the total project cost and the local share, this is just for center school. We did, uh, we adjusted this for inflation because you know it's all through the roof. You're looking at twenty twenty-five dollars, a, a local share of six point one million dollars. And that is just for center school. That is not a CIP project that I just presented. This is an addition. Flier did the same thing for Hall School. Again, same concept, um, providing new dumpster recycling areas, renovating the eight thousand gallon septic system, replacing the existing fuel tanks. All of these items. Replace all ceilings, all, all, uh, ceiling systems. The door hardware and, and at the toilet rooms, there's a whole ton of this stuff. Hall School, local share, ten point two million. Not on a CIP plan. Do you add these up? Just gives you a sense of what we're talking about. CIP projects in addition to the prior projects is close to nineteen million dollars. When we say these buildings need some work, it's not that we've neglected them. It's sometimes when you've had a brick building that's lasted a few hundred years, which is amazing, it needs repainting. It costs a lot of money. So this is a, a ballpark of cost avoidance. You wouldn't have to pay this if you did that, left the alteration extension of Hall School or you built a new building on a new site. The slide you've all been waiting for, this is why you're probably here, wanna know the money. The last slide we have for you tonight is, is the cost of the building options. And Scott, is it fair to say this, the costs on here align to Mansfield Public Schools, who just has a similar-sized project?
Yeah, correct. If you have a, a line of Mansfield, we've also looked at neighboring projects that have been recently bid. We also looked at South Windsor, looked at Wyndham High School, which is an occupied renovation project. So, uh, we used all of our most recent data as well as, uh, working with all the contractors and constructors we work with projecting out. So these dollars are the same as what Phil just represented. It's, it's projected to a twenty twenty-five, uh, construction value. So when we escalated the recommend, recommendations for Friar, we, we use this same baseline. We, uh, look at inflation to the midpoint of construction. Then we put in values to that. So it's, it's an apples-to-apples comparison from what Phil just presented.
And so you can see the call, the calls. So here are the four projects, right? Again, the A is simply auditorium. The total estimated budget is this column. The estimated state funding without a waiver, we thought this was important to share because I, we would be applying for a waiver. We just can't guarantee that we're gonna get it, which is frustrating. The estimated cost to the town without the waiver, that's this column. This is the aboxment percentage that, um, the state would be covering. And then the green headings here, the columns, the estimated state funding with the waiver and the estimated cost to the town with the waiver. Scott, do you wanna speak to, uh, how you apply the waiver here?
Yeah, well, I, I think starting out and, and just so people don't, um, if, if you look at the math, it's highlighted in yellow and corresponds to the box if you read at the bottom, calculated state reimbursement rate. It's, it's multiple factors. It takes the initial rate. Let's start at the top for the new construction. You know, we noted that again, you're over the space standard, the expect is greater than the space standard sheet that, that Phil presented of the fifty-seven thousand square feet. So that reduces your rate to fifty-three point two-one down to forty point eight-three percent. Then that is applied to the eligible construction. And so it's not the total construction. So if you multiply sixty million, six thirty-four times forty point eight-three, you're not going to get the twenty-four five oh nine. There's, there's a percentage of stuff over the property line, things that aren't eligible. It, it gets a little bit worse while you see the reimbursement rate, uh, drops because the square footage in option one A and both of the As because you're adding an auditorium. You're, you're pushing that threshold of square footage at delta from that fifty-seven thousand prior to the space waiver. You're pushing it a little higher, so your reimbursement rate drops. And then again, you can't just multiply the thirty-six point nine times the sixty-six billion for one A because, um, as Phil stated, the state will be pays for a, an auditorium of half your student population. So we calculated out what that value would be. The other half of that, which is ineligible or a hundred percent on the town of Wellington. So you take your reimbursement rate and you multiply it by the eligible construction. Now, when we go to a space waiver, uh, again, the top one, new construction, our, our reimbursement from the state is fifty-three point two-one percent. We're, we're, we're saying in this case, we're gonna ask for the whole, the whole, the whole nut to get there. So we don't lose anything, uh, from a reimbursement standpoint, so that then the state would give us back fifty-three point two-one percent of the eligible construction. We go down to the second, option one A. Again, the reimbursement rate comes down a little bit because we're adding an auditorium. But again, the state will only pay for about half of that auditorium, eight thousand square feet. The state's only gonna give you four thousand square feet of that area, half of that cost. That also, again, that's four thousand square feet the state says, we're not paying for. That re, brings down your reimbursement rate slightly, so it, it goes down to fifty point six five percent. And again, there's a little bit more of ineligible construction cost, half of that cost of the auditorium. State's not gonna pay for it, it's ineligible. So you take the reimbursement rate times the eligible construction. And again, we have to add three or four more rows here to show you all the math behind it. And results in that number. With option two and two A, it's interesting that the starting point is actually ten percentage points higher. It's sixty-three point two-one, not fifty, fifty-three point two-one for new construction. Alter, renovation, alteration renovation project started at a higher threshold. Same approach, uh, you, we, we take in what the, the standard is, the space, the space of the existing facility. What Phil and I did is we took a look at this building and these areas that would remain. And we looked at the expect and we said, how many of those items in the expect do we fit in? Well, okay, auditorium or gymnasium, we've got a gymnasium, we've got a music room. We assigned names, we assigned expect, uh, requirements to everything that was gonna remain in this building, subtracting those off the expect. And then the remainder of the expect, what remained, that was, that is how we came to what the area of the addition would be. Unfortunately, within this old building, there are, Phil pointed out, single loaded corridors, some very strange spaces. You know, the, the, the four classrooms on each side of, up on the second floor have a single corridor and two stairs at each end. Lot of space that in a new design, um, wouldn't be needed if it was laid out differently. So this building is not quite as efficient square footage-wise. And, and again, it potentially pay a little bit of penalty on that. So we calculated out again the reimbursement rates with the waiver. Option two, again, you get that sixty-three point two-one percent. But the big, the big nut here is, it's sixty-three point two-one percent of the eligible construction. Now, if you recall, Phil said to qualify for renovation status, you have to prove to the state that a renovation project would be cheaper than building new. And the numbers we've looked at and in the timeline, because of the phased destruction, there's gonna be more escalations, the amount of time it takes, um, the fieldwork, so forth. You can see that option one, sixty point six million, option two, sixty-two point three estimated. So in fact, it's more expensive to renovate than it is to build. So in fact, it's more expensive to renovate than it is to build new. So there's a lot more of the construction that is not eligible. So you take the 63.21, you multiply the eligible construction, which is a lot less. And that's why those numbers are the way they are.
Catherine, that is all I have. Scott, I think just going to remind people, I know people are going to want to know bonding information and no rate impact. That is something that we are working on, that will be in the next presentation. So I think if we're ready to take questions, we can talk, just process and then you can jump. I think what we're going to try and do is not many of you in the room, but we're going to try and jump around various ways that people can ask questions. If you're not comfortable asking a question at the microphone, you can write it on one of those cards and put it on the desk over there, Eric will grab it. We will try and do like two with the microphone, two written if they're there, two online live and then two she's had the chat. Have you had questions come in the chat?
Not one.
Not one, okay. You've done a really good job. So we'll skip around. Catherine, I will pass it back to you.
Okay, so I just want to thank Mr. Stevens for that excellent presentation. As he said, we are going to be accepting questions and answers at the end. You do have a time limit of one minute. So please ask your question clearly and swiftly and we will do our best to answer each and every question. If we cannot answer it, we will write it down and we will publish the answer either in our next meeting or in a future publication. So far the only, there's nothing online, just one sign up.
Go ahead, or accept the line. I have two questions. I haven't had a chance to really study all the details, but can you really cover, this is a minor issue, but can you really cover all foreign language, you know, kindergarten through eighth grade in one foreign language room? That's one thing that stood out to me. And if we built a new school, which obviously appears to be a little bit cheaper, how would we maintain? There's a lot of history to this building, a lot of people that this building is really important. How would we carry forward some of those traditions and keep that connection to this, the history of this building, which may not seem important in this big picture, but I think it's important to allow people to attend. Thank you.
So I can answer the first question, foreign language in one classroom. We are, if you don't know, foreign language is a shortage area and it's very hard to find teachers. And so we are currently in the middle school level utilizing Rosetta Stone. It's something we're trying out. Every student is using their Chromebook and they have been able to choose their language. They're using a headset and a microphone. That is a way we continue it. But the thought is that we could use a secondary space that is not used full time. And that is actually written in the expect that one of the classrooms that's not used full time would also be used for elementary world language or it could be done in a homeroom class. The really the world language classroom that's in the expect is a middle school world language classroom. So do you want to answer the second question about traditions too? So we are in the process, we're going to do this fall and decide to do it in spring. We're going to have a celebration of this building. And there are loads of traditions that we would have to find a way to bring across. Things like the banners that come out of, you know, promotion circles. That's just, that's a big one, but there's a lot of those traditions. So I think that would be something that we would have to work hard to identify. That would be done with the public, that would be done with Hall Foundation, that would be done with students. And you know, I would say past students who have gone through this building, alumni. It would be part of our, not necessarily SBC process, but I think it would be more on the school side to make sure that if we did go to a new site, that we address that and we did it well.
Hand down the phone lines, a question into the chat.
Hey, NickTella49Myrtle.
If someone wants to type a question into the chat, you can send it to the host, which is my name, Erica Wyszynski. The co-host is a separate computer across the room that's set up just for play purposes.
So just to repeat that, if you are online and you are looking to send a chat, please send it to Erica Wyszynski and the chat will come through to her, the question will come through. And we can announce the question out loud and answer it for you.
You want to jump to the question on the chat? Yes, I think I agree with you. No, no, the person who answered it.
So who's that?
I don't know. It's not a.
We'll read it online, it's going to be on the speaker too.
Oh, the question online was, what's the difference between the steam room and the science classroom?
Good question. So what's the difference in the expect between a steam room and a science room, a science classroom? Science classroom is a specific lab for science classes only. STEAM is a varied class. STEAM is another educational acronym, science, technology, engineering, arts and music. And so it could be used for a variety of things. Picture classroom, and the easiest way is to describe this. Picture classroom has Lego robotics in it. It has a small residential kitchen for baking. It could have a woodworking station. It could have a variety of those types of things. It could be music based, it could be dramatic play. There's a lot of things and that's what the steam room is typically for. And that is why it's in there. It's something that we have very strong in this building, it's part of their, you know, program. And that's why it's going to be headshot. Erica, did you say you have any hand up?
I did, the person unmuted and then used themselves and put their hand down. The name is upgrade, David Money, NickTella. I don't know if it solves the question.
NickTella, are you still online looking for a question?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, Rob Cook, 77 Com Room. I appreciate the presentation, the question I have, option one and option two. What is the square footage you're looking at? I understand property development cost, what is the square footage for option one and option two? The addition to square footage.
Yes, I answered.
So if you look at, I'll start with option one, because that's where it was. So option one shows this is the square footage for. This is two. Scott, you're in 82,311. Thank you, it's the expect, right? A is two, that's what I thought, it's the expect. It's not on there. So it's exactly what is in the expect. It's easier to show this. So this right here, 83,134 is what is in the educational specifications. That is what a new building, again, 1A, sorry, with the auditorium would be. If you took away the auditorium and take about 6,400 square feet away from that number, that would be option one. And then option two, the both, I think, is the same concept. So you're looking at 82,311, correct? Right here, and with the auditorium, you're looking at 90,311.
We have a question online. So Mr. Tella, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Awesome.
And ask a question.
Awesome, can you hear me?
So, yep. You can unmute yourself and ask a question. Oh, you are.
Yep, so NickTella49Myrtle. You know, I understand we're going, looking at new and renovations, those two options. My concern is that back, and I've mentioned this before, January 2021, we looked at numbers of about 14 million to upgrade. I understand those numbers may be higher, but even if you were to stretch that up to 24 million, I mean, that's still $5 million, $5 million less. And you would still have 93,500 square feet. I just don't understand why we're still not entertaining that. Again, that's going to save at minimum $5 million. When it comes to the evaluations of Erica's family's property, I mean, Woodstock had 79 acres, go for 120,000, little elevation change, little wetlands, pretty flat. Talon Turnpike had a land, 64.85 go, and that sold for 209,000 back in April. So I just, that $270,000 just seems a little high. So that's all I have. And if there's any way to get these upgrade numbers to us, to at least compare them to the other two options, I think that would be beneficial to the taxpayers. Thank you.
I'd like to address nearly the last comment that Nick made about the value of the property. Just for clarity, the property was appraised by a professional appraisal company certified to do this type of appraisal, contracted by our committee and recommended to multiple Realtors in both private and commercial. So we vetted the appraiser very carefully. And if this process were to continue in that fashion, the state would require us to get more appraisals. So that price is based on a fair appraisal, but this would be a continuing evaluation.
Any other questions in the room? I have a few concerns about either option with consolidation because of the different ages of our children. Will they have separate entrances in the process or want to solve it simply?
I'm going to answer that right away. So the separate entrance is unknown. If you do separate entrances, it is an added cost. But that would be when we get to, if we get to the designing phase of this process, that would be more of a conversation for sure.
Several parts of same theme. Did you mention maybe all starting at the same time?
If we go to a pre-K through eighth grade model on a building, the idea would have one schedule. Part of, and they would start at the same time. We actually, it seems like forever ago, pre-COVID, the middle school principal and I had gone to several pre-K through eighth grade buildings throughout the state to tour, to look at their schedules. And one of the common themes we heard over and over was do one schedule. If you do separate schedules, and I'll give you a bold as the example, they have a different start time for their elementary and middle school, which means different start times for their staffs. It is extremely hard to do. So we would do a mountain schedule, my ballpark is starting at 8:00 AM as opposed to hall school right now, starting at 7:25. Center school would be back a half hour, hall school would be up a half hour.
Okay, then would you contemplate that they would be all bussed up in the same buses?
Correct, they would be bussed up.
Pre-K through eighth on the same bus?
We would, yep.
That's a very challenging situation, very challenging situation. Think from 33 years of bus driving. My other concern and question is with option one, we do go with the new school and the location we were at at last crack, and is traffic on the pad of that? It's a very, very hard to estimate that for blast back. They're very narrow on the roads, it's really hard to make roads. Visibility is very poor. So that's something that most definitely.
And Scott, I know your type, I believe you would have to do a traffic study as part of moving forward in the evaluation of the.
I've been on it a lot of years, it's really, really hard to see.
To be honest with you, we, I, Mike, I could nod your head or pick the mic. I think there was actually some sites that were eliminated simply because we didn't have any site line. The only place you could go in, think about coming down Route 320 where younger men property, you're by the bus law, yeah, you're trying to pull out of that curb, it's extremely hard to do. And that's something that the state looks at as their site lines. And they would actually come out and walk this property if it is a new school on your site. And the traffic study would be part of this process.
And just my personal interest that there is a lot of tradition in hall school. I guess that generally, his family, his father, his, his uncles, aunts and uncles all went to the school. Our, we went to the school, our children went to the school. So it's very hard, well, hearing, you know. It's very hard for us to contemplate getting of that, that history and that, that we all enjoy and cherish.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. Mr. Tella, maybe follow up and comment. He still, his comment is I sell real estate myself, an appraisal means little. We tell clients all the time, you have appraisal that the town thinks your property is worth with what an appraiser thinks it is and what a buyer is willing to pay. Because an appraisal comes in at $270,000, does that mean that's market value? If you'd like, I can do another question.
We can, I think, Erica, we can share all these comments out to it. We're looking for questions. We can share all these comments out on our, sort of on our website page after.
And one comment, I did respond, please make this presentation available.
It will be online tomorrow on the SBC webpage.
So the question from Jillian is, would the new renovated building be able to accommodate additional students should universal preschool become funded in the future?
So the question is, would the new building, and it really will, this question, I'm going to adjust it, sorry. Whether it's hall school or a new building in a new site, would it accommodate a universal preschool should that occur? And there are currently in the head spec two preschool classrooms. And that is depending on what happens with universal pre-K. If they make it a full day program versus the requirement, and it could be a half day program. We currently only have one classroom for preschool at center school. This head spec has two. And typically, what will happen if they mandate something like that for universal pre-K is they have to put their money where their mouth is. State's not always good at doing that. But what that means is there are grant funds that you can apply for to allow for universal pre-K. So either project in the head spec right now has two preschool classrooms.
That is why we have been very careful about making sure we have extension property, that if we did need to add something on, we would have the space to do that.
Is there anybody else that would like to? Steph Summers? Are you going on the list?
Yeah, we have the list. Steph Summers for Wyng Road. I'm kind of channeling the kids and also because I'm a mother of a 22-year-old who went all through our schools and had a great experience, but there were some shortcomings even back then. And one is, can you touch, Phil, on top of my research? And one is, can you touch Phil on top of my research you have on the effect of windowless classrooms in Middle Earth and their effect on learning?
Thanks. So part of this process, if you go into a design phase, is to hear from specialists and look at the research. And I'm sure Colley was going to provide that information for us, but the research on bringing the outside in, which is natural, our natural light, is incredibly important in the learning process. It was something that for the folks that toured Birch Grove, which is the, the school that had the foundation, Tom, but it was rebuilt. I remember standing in, I think I was standing with you, we were standing in an interior hallway where you could see through glass, through numerous hallways and offices to the outside. And the idea that you could bring that bright air and sunlight into the classroom to this curriculum. It's one of the reasons I didn't have those pictures in the, the presentation. But we can provide all the research to back that up. It's one of the environmental factors that has to be considered, which is why looking at Hall School and some of our classrooms, because our, our teachers do a great job decorating, but when you're below grade, you don't have a window. It impacts people for sure.
Thank you. I also see in schematic 2A, the, the playing fields are superimposed for three sports. Could more than one field be used simultaneously? And could we host home games at a school like that?
That is a conceptual drawing. And what I would say right now is no. And the reason why is the two sports that are, the way that's built is you don't have fence lines for baseball and softball. And so, yes, you could fit three fields in that space, we believe. But you could not play softball and baseball at the same time because you're getting balls at the back of someone else. You'd have to stagger, just like we do for this gym for basketball. We stagger the, the boys and girls practices, practices earlier, one practices later. You'd probably have to do a similar thing for that and so different games.
And, and then just in that same area, an offshoot question is where would playground facilities be for the young kids?
So, good question. So if you look, and this is one of the things that we put in EdSpec is for the younger students. You want a playground area, we're talking about pre-K, K, very close to their classroom. And this space right here, right outside, there's, in the conceptual drawing, there are some classrooms in here. And this is where they would go out onto this younger area placing. When you look at the room fourth, it is over here next to a paved play area. And when we say these things are squeezed in here, they are squeezed into that space. We believe it can work, which is why it's important to conversation, but it is very, very tight.
And, and my last question is about an auditorium option, regardless, one of the two plans. And that is, would it be usable for the community at large, for town meetings right now? Our, our go-to place is the old town hall that doesn't have any, you know, audio visual or anything. But more important, it only accommodates 2% of the population of the town. Before you have to cancel and send it some meeting somewhere else, we've been having more community interest of late. And I'm just wondering, is that, is that doable? Is that an option?
It's in the EdSpec. So part of the EdSpec, this community usage. And it's, it basically just has groups, you know, that could, that the auditorium, just like the gym, could be used by groups now. It's, it's signed up. So Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, you know, 4H, any direct department things. They wanted to do a theater club. Those are things that you could use. The other thing you could use, and I'll throw a plug here for turf fields. I got shot down last night. One of the things I'll say about turf fields is you can rent them. There are lots of people looking for turf fields for rentals. Theaters are the same thing. And I know Donna Cook has said this a couple of times, that if you don't buy one, don't add a theater to these, to whatever plan you pick. If you go that route, you don't have the auditorium. Could you either do something here or could you rent out something like through a tunnel or something like that? But yes, the answer is yes. The community piece is a part of it. Just like this gym is kind of our big meeting space, the auditorium could be used for that as well.
Thank you.
So Joan Tarasewitz is asking, is there an estimate for the cost of new equipment such as smart boards?
So the question is, is there an estimate for the cost of equipment such as smart boards? It's in the numbers. I believe it's called FFNE. It is in that section and it's all built in as part of that, that number. What does FFNE stand for? Thank you. See that? First, her picture's what? Equipment. Just learned something new today. Thank you. I knew it was part of the note there.
Donna?
Donna Cuck, 77, comment, a few questions. What is the maximum number of students we can currently have in Center School and at Hall School?
I would have to get that for you. It goes off the top of my head.
The other thing is the cost of maintaining the new building also needs to be incorporated. I know I've heard that the library has not been well maintained. It's a beautiful brand new building. And if we don't, to quote somebody I know, if we don't take care of our toys, there's problems. Um, the cost to disassemble Center School, because either one of these meets Center School is no longer going to be used. And we just can't leave the building there to become an eyesore of danger. So what would be the cost of either disassembling the building or doing whatever needs to be done to sell it?
Do you want to get some better?
Thank you, Donna. We have discussed that in our committee quite a bit, actually, because it is part of our charge. We don't have dollars just yet, but we do have a plan to look at what can be done at Center. It may not have to be demolished. So there may, no, there may not be a cost for that. But we are looking at other opportunities of how to utilize Center School.
And then hopefully that will be determined before any referendum. So we have all the information to make decisions. The other thing is.
Thank you. So the, the charge of this current committee, this school building committee, is to determine potential uses. So the school building committee has communicated with the Board of Selectmen, and we started the topic at our last meeting. And we believe it's a much broader conversation of what the town wants to do with those buildings. And some of these community engagements will give us a sense of that direction. But for a school project, the question that would go to referendum would be about a specific school building. I would say similar to Mamfield, part of their project was demolishing the building that was on the current site. So that cost was included in their project. Does that correct?
That is correct because it was on the same site, so one white, red first field. State would not pay for you to demolish a building if you were building a new. If it was on an off, it was off-site, I would be, you know. But they would pay for whatever was eligible to demolish this building as part of a building project on this side.
So for those online, it, it would not be part of, because it's off-site, the project not be part of the cost for the school. Where in some communities it may be. So this may be a decision that comes after there's a project. If there's a successful referendum for either project, then the town would need to determine. And we requested some dollars from CIP to have a study of facilities in town to determine. So I, I just don't, I, I don't want to be focused astray that there would be a, a solid dollar amount. We could give a potential if specific options were chosen, if demolition were eventually chosen. But the question would go before the town people would be the, the project cost for the specific project.
I think it's important because if Center School is no longer used as a school, then the town is going to use it. If it's decided to use it for something else, we're really not saving the cost of rooms and other things. Because we would, it may come out, not come out of the corporate pocket, but it's going to come out of the town pocket, which means it's coming out of the taxpayers' pocket. So we need, I think we need to have a full picture so that we can make intelligent decisions. And when I'm looking at the cost for each of the four options, you know, whether the money comes from Wellington or comes from the state of Connecticut, it's still our money. So right now we're comparing something that's either 60.6 million to 69.9 million to paying 18.9 million to have all of those prior things taken care of. So I think that we just need to look at the whole thing and, and not saying that those options might not be a good choice. But I think we need to be wide open into the fact that the 18.9 million that Phil mentioned earlier tonight would not necessarily be happening all at once, all in one year. It might be spread over maybe four or five years. Thank you.
Question online.
Please.
In the room, Jason Roberts?
Jason Roberts wants to go to, I know I said earlier that the town owns Hall School for the purposes of a school. It's actually going by Hall Foundation. I haven't heard or seen anything from them throughout this whole process. Is there anything, like say we alter and whatever, we sink all that money into this school? Is there anything to keep the Hall Foundation from pulling that back? Or is it like perpetually? Or could we just need to not watch money?
Hi. We have people in the room who can help answer that, but I'll tell you what I know from conversations, including with representatives, the Hall Foundation. First of all, as long as we continue to use it for this purpose, it is ours. We own it. The Hall Foundation does not, in a way, it's legally, they don't have a claim to it as long as we continue to meet the condition of the Quikling, which is to use it as a school. If we were to make decisions to not use it as a school, the Hall Foundation is absolutely open to conversation about what happens next. It wouldn't be, in all likelihood, a simple transaction of we decide to walk away. The clause is enacted and all of a sudden, the Hall Foundation has the building or whatever. I don't think it would ever be that simple. If someone from the Hall Foundation wants to add more to that, they, they're absolutely welcome to do that either tonight or, or we can communicate through our committee, whatever way is chosen. There's no one's going to come and take it from us as long as we're using it as a school. That help answer the question?
And that's like, is that contract like?
It's ours. Yeah, it's ours.
No matter.
It's the deed. So it's the deed to the building.
We own this. So the only thing is there's a reversion. If we choose to not meet the conditions, but we own it, as long as we don't trigger the reversion, this is ours.
Like, are they just bad that, like, that Quikling is online?
Yes, the Quikling deed is available in the material for this online, so you can look at it.
So Jason, just to follow up on what Wayne just said. He did actually have an attorney to look at the Quikling deed. And basically, in terms of today's language, legal language, is it still valid? And the response came back that it is still valid. So the deed that was written many years ago is still valid today.
No other question online? So the question from Michael Johansson is, would this proposed new facility on Glass Factory need to have access to public water and sewer? Or would this solely service by what could be obtained or deemed on the site?
I just want to repeat that question through the mic.
Yeah, sure.
Would this proposed new facility on Glass Factory need to have access to public water and sewer? Or would it solely be serviced by what could be obtained or changed on the site?
That's a, he's saying that the future, that's something we can find right now to make sure we have in front of our.
So that's to be determined is what our orders project managers say it would be determined. Currently, there isn't public water there, right? So that's, but one of the main reasons would have to be determined. The only current source of water is in the area of Hall School. And then serviced to public buildings on Gold Farm Road. I did have one comment, question online. The last EdSpec, no, the last EdSite through the state showed we spent, this is from Nick Tella. Showed we spent 200 per pupil under state average on maintenance. How do we know the school administration will give proper funding to the schools when we have under-spent the state average in the past?
I think the Board of Finance, the capital improvement planning group is probably fed up with current superintendent proposing projects that are millions of dollars. And so I can't speak for prior time, but that CIP page that's there, I don't know that we've had a superintendent do this in the past. And I will tell you that working with our maintenance guys, I, I don't believe in the duct tape fixing. I'm tired of the duct tape fix. It's not the right way to do business. And we have worked hard to change that mentality. And so, will we take care of it in the future? I can only say if I'm here, absolutely. Part of the planning, if you, whether you, it, it doesn't matter the project, whether it's brand new or renovation here. You have to plan to, of how to take care of your mechanical rooms, of how to take care of your ventilation. It needs inspections. How to make sure you, and, and part of the CIP plan is having a schedule and knowing this has to happen in three years. And it's, if you start deferring those things, it adds up. There are certain things over time that, you know what, it's, you know, like I said, the, the brick repointing. Those are bigger projects, but the actual maintenance on those things, if I'm here, that's, it's going to be part of this plan. And moving into a new building or a renovation, alteration, extension here at Hall School. Yeah, I think that one of the things that, what Angie asked was, do you want to mention M4? I'm a proponent of making sure you have the proper professionals that you're working with. Here's an example of one. And when it comes to maintenance and IT, we're small. We were operating with our, our IT process with one person, single point of failure, and it hurt us. We now work with Novus, who helps us and the town. And we get an army for, or a decent amount of money. It's a, it's an expensive contract. But what we get out of it is huge. We also work with M4, the mechanic. And so they come in and they do, we pay contract them to come in and do all of our preventative maintenance on all of our, our mechanics. They're documented. They have their age. They have their serial number. And they can say, can you replace that? Can you get a belt for that? They're going to say yes or no. But we would need to do the same thing going in and moving forward. If you move into a brand new building or you do a significant upgrade to your mechanics, fire suppression, whatever it is, you label it, you make it very clear what year it was installed, what the timeline is for, for maintenance. That's got to be part of moving forward. And that's kind of the, the, the. That's got to be part of moving forward. Um, and that's kind of the, the, the theory that I have, that it stops you from getting stuck on things. Uh, it, from having catastrophes that, you know, cost you 10 times the amount than if you just took care of it the wrong way.
Just to add to what Phil was saying, um, on a new project or any new equipment that goes into either a new school or a renovated school, with new equipment, you're going to have warranties. So that will take care of, uh, the warranty on any kind of new equipment. Granted, you have to do your regular maintenance, uh, but there are warranties that come with these new pieces of equipment.
Jim Marshall? I'm sorry, James.
Hey, guys. Uh, Jim Marshall, forty six, Fisher Hill Road. Sorry, I'm taller than you guys. I just wanted to start with a second. Thank you guys for all the hard work you've put into this in the past two years. I know how complicated this process can be, particularly if you haven't got through it. You guys know me a little bit, but I come in as an architect by trade. I do, uh, K through twelve school construction, uh, the elements I work with. And I got to say, you know, it, it's got to be noted that a new, thankfully it's a new school building for the students. I'm also a father who has two kids, uh, in Central now, um, so I'm paying very gross attention to this. But yeah, I'm supportive of new schools. I understand how impactful it can be, uh, you know, to the education of students. You know, Phil mentioned everything from a way of natural lighting, um, good air conditioning, um, you know, twenty first century spaces that allow for some quality of education and allow for collaborative work. You don't get that in a hundred year old building because they weren't designed for that education model. It sells in dollars and wasn't, you know, twenty first century. It wasn't twenty first century education. Um, so that being said, you know, and I, um, I have a couple of comments. I'm not going to give the two of you, but I think what would be helpful particularly related to, um, in understanding the costs is, is, I know this is the first step, but I think for the breakdown of that budget item, uh, I do have questions. What's carried in that? You know, our soft costs carried in that? I know FFA was, um, you know, what sort of, uh, contingency are you carrying in those numbers? So, you know, I'm not going to put you on the spot to answer any of that now, but I think that for clarity would give a lot of people some comfort potentially. I also would like to say that I think, um, that two good questions, the auditorium, is that the same size of both options, both the new build? Because they're carrying about $2 million delta difference in the budgets from option one A and two A. It's the same square footage. I'm just wondering why the increased cost of renovation and how you factor that. The slide is up, but I think there's like a $7 million difference for two A and five million for one A. This is just something to clarify. Um, but also, I got notes. I'm trying to process. So I know one of the other topics we're going to see a lot of is what does combining K through eight into a single school do? And it's, it's, it's not uncommon. I think combining schools is, is, is very manageable from a design standpoint with the proper site and proper facility. There are ways to mitigate it, whether it's one entrance or multiple entrances, but, you know, the design of buildings can be flexible enough so they create wings that are separately, you know, isolated to a substantial enough degree that you don't have to worry about that interacting. The bus thing is, is, is a little more challenging. You know, that involves bus monitors and whatnot. So I think that's something that'd be suitable for clarification. But again, I think all of these in a new build are worth, are definitely worthwhile. And one other thing to factor in is that the other big topic is going to be what if we do nothing? We got a renovation cost. It's a lot less than a new school construction. Sorry, I feel like I'm slouching. You know, the disadvantage of that is that, there you go. Wow, that's a big difference. Sorry, guys. So, you know, there's an eighteen million dollar avoidance cost, um, that you've captured. But even if you decide to go that route, you're not necessarily, that's, that's capital improvement plan maintenance and that's, you know, basic upgrades. That is not necessarily providing adequate educational space that a new construction is going to do. So yes, it may be cheaper, but you're sacrificing, um, well-being, you're sacrificing, um, you know, student comforts, student advancement, flexibility to space in a twenty first century education model potential, you know, so there is an added cost that you're not getting. And it's important because if you're putting that much money in, you really should be doing something that is effective for the students. So again, um, I'm looking forward to seeing how you guys continue this effort over the next few months and, um, thank you.
What will the site prep consist of? Nice, you're just talking about new build. Um, and will they need to blast, to blast?
What will the site prep? Do I have to just say that question in the mic?
So what will the site prep involve? And we're assuming that's our new site and will they need to blast? I'll, I'll have to answer that question in the future, um, future meeting. I did want to say on James' question about the costs, we are going to be having, uh, another community engagement where we'll dive into the bill rate and some of the costs and how it will impact the community's taxes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you too. You have a lot of great points. Uh, yeah, I will say that the budgets presented include all soft costs. You know, including builder's risk insurance, you know, everything, that's all the design fee, stormwater management, all of those fees are in the soft plus. The reason that the two A option is more expensive is again, if you look at the timeline and if you look at the escalations, you're carrying about two more years of escalation. So that mid-year point construction is, is farther out. So that's driving costs up. So that's just, you know, one of those, those points. But yeah, we have taken into account all part of the soft costs, all FFD. Again, when we talk about escalation, we escalated the Friar number to twenty twenty-five, which is midpoint construction for the new school. I thought that was the baseline. I wasn't going to go ahead and reapply that to the further out one of the options, two or two A, which is the renovation here. It's a phased approach. It takes longer, more escalations. Things pushed up.
Dave Corrane?
Dave Corrane, twenty two, One to No Road, Whitey, Whitey Billian. Out of sixty-five acres, how much is of it is usable?
I'll give it a shot. Um, you walked in. Yes. So obviously we haven't done steps like actual wetlands delineation. So we can't, we can't specify an exact amount of area that might or might not be wetlands. However, the piece of property is, there is a, a much larger than the twenty acres we would need is what seems to be very useful. We've walked a lot. There's no evidence of ledge and all this other stuff. Of course, we know Wellington, which could be pretty close. But, uh, there are some areas that if you look at, you say, that's probably going to be keeping the wetlands. But there's way, way over the twenty acres available, even with my, I slept the Halloween at last night level of expenses.
I didn't know that.
You gotta step up. Um, so what I would say is as far as getting this project in and having room for expansion, to me, it's a no-brainer. And the site is level enough that it should not be significant to handle the property. There are other areas you can even see, and it's up here, and you can see areas that would potentially be bordered as wetlands. Again, that's not officially delineated. That's estimated by the mapping process. But if you, even all of that area that you don't need to the left, like left and down from the words bus drop off, all of that area that's not even needed and it does not appear to be wetlands. It gets very steep as you get over near Route thirty-two. We all know right below, um, where Adam and Road comes out. You go downhill over Route thirty-two and there's a swamp. You show there's a swamp there. Obviously, that's not buildable property. But I don't have to put a number on it, but it's way over the twenty acres.
Now, how many acres are you going to have to clear cut to put a school if, if this, if the town moved?
Well, again, it would be roughly the footprint that you're seeing. Again, this is a conceptual plan. It's not the final design we would use. But it would be roughly the footprint you see right there that has blocks put on it at the driveway. Everything to the left and below, like where the words bus drop off is on that map, right now that's woods, that could stay woods. But if one, if the town, if, if people came up with a plan to make, say, as a recreation, there's all sorts of space available for that.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna easily clear five, five to ten acres. A lot more, more than that, right? So your twenty acres that the state's requiring you have to build this school, it's probably going to be all clear cut.
Yeah, I would say we would use roughly the twenty acres, right? By the time we put the fields in and everything.
So there goes, there goes all the green, green air and all these people that were complaining a couple of months ago about trees getting cut down for possible other project in town. Here we are. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna clear cut twenty acres.
Well, I think that's a lot less than the other project, but.
It's still, it's the same idea. I'm glad it was.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions on the list?
No, uh, nothing online.
I guess, Jim Marshall again, forty-six, Fisher Hill Road. Um, yeah, I didn't touch on the site, but, um, you know, honestly, I think this, I was nervous about the site selection. Um, to be completely honest, this has kind of been speculated this property for a while. And I, I, you know, I can't say I don't like it. I'm a little biased. I like the school if this is the case. But from a, just as a point of reference, because anyway, if you got a, if you avoid the hillside, you got probably about twenty seven acres outside of that fence there, twenty seven to thirty. Yeah, you probably will need to clear cut twenty, but, you know, as a comparison to the last project, it was pretty adamant against the logistics center. You know, clearing twenty acres of land that our students could use for schools significantly different than clearing almost a hundred, you know, for a logistics center and truck traffic. You know, the site is centralized in town. I think it's, I, you know, honestly, for what it's worth, I think it's a good one. So, I don't know. A good job in finding it, I guess, guys. So thank you.
Yes.
So the, the one thing I wanted to ask on two, two A that struck me when I was looking at the visuals was, are you able on, in that plan to create that double entry system that you were talking about, Phil, for the safety? Because, I mean, it's unfortunate that we have to worry to the degree we need to worry now, just what we know in our home state of experience. But the safety of the, the, that, those, those options overall concern me because they are so crowded. I mean, but also in safety on another end of it is, um, with everything so crowded on that existing acreage, would bus and school safety be compromised because of such a tight layout? I'm just kind of thinking about what it's like when there's a huge town meeting in here, but, you know, certainly when there's a play or eighth grade graduation. Where, where do the people go? You know, and, um, and is the bus safety in particular sort of tight in that, the way that's drawn?
So this is again, used to concept, right? So, um, the idea here is that you want a separate bus drop off driveway. This allows that. I think our bus drivers would be quite happy about this and not having to contend with people crossing the parking lot or cars driving past the red lights. It separates that. What I will tell you, and, and I don't think I've said this, Scott, it's no secret. I'm still worried about the amount of parking on this concept plan. You know, looking at the number of people that we have and staff numbers and looking at events, uh, you're looking at, uh, was it a hundred parking spots? Ten? Ninety-two parking spots in this plan. So, uh, it's, that is concerning to me. But the separation that I've been looking for as an administrator, I feel is there. And again, this is just a concept. It's not people, it could be done. But in that design phase, when you start talking about that, safety is not compromised. You find a way to do the double, that's the deal would be in this system. You would find those ways to, to build those same educational specifications, whether it's a new, to build a new site or if it's an alteration, especially at Hall School.
Okay, thank you. Nothing online. No rich hands ready or colorful questions. So we'll take two more questions.
Just good to have this up. Uh, Scott has a quick question. The, um, the two-story addition, um, from a basic perspective. The two-story addition with thirty-seven dozen square feet, I know this is just a, you know, a test fit, but is that able to accommodate the population of Hall with all of the necessary infrastructure and support spaces without, so that the existing facility can be renovated? Maybe you've got a schedule. I didn't study it, but.
Yeah, no, the, the, the short answer again, very high level concept is yes, because we're also keeping the academic two-story addition from thirty-two until, until the new addition is complete renovation. If you look at the schedule, renovations, we cover two summers. So the public spaces cafeteria, gymnasium, those spaces would be done in the summer months. Remaining classrooms in the existing nineteen twenties building would be done once those were vacated. So I do believe it can be phased. It's always a challenge. If you're in school construction, you know. I do believe it can be done, but that's why we're keeping that front demo existing weight all the way to the end. Because we want that extra swing space to make sure that we minimize as best we can the impact to the students who have to live through almost three renovation process.
Yeah, and that's a very important point. I mean, my daughter won't be knowing that this goes throughout the entirety of this construction. So, um, you know, the impact cannot be understated if, you know, learning a construction site for three, four years. It is a very critical, you know, point that everybody should be attentive to. And that's it. Again, I'm just going to add to that, as I said this publicly the other day at the ARPA commission. With these timelines, and this is something that I'm very cognizant of, the same students that we closed school on for COVID and have gone through the, uh, very different education is the same exact group of students that would be living through renovation of this type of project. They would have a pre-teen, eighth grade, uh, education load and that would be very, very destructive.
So be our last question?
David ran a point to One to No Road. In reference to this picture here, the brown line is for school buses only?
Correct.
Okay, now where's the school buses getting out of the parking lot, up on school? Over there. Where are the cars going? That's people are dropping off their kids.
Same, same area. So the buses will come in from a separate entrance, Phil, as you say, and then will go out on the same exit that the parent drop off is using?
So you're still going to have to see the bottleneck to do that now? So you're still going to have to say the bottleneck to do that now?
So his point I thought is that when buses leave here
When when buses leave, there is a a single exit that combines all parent and buses. Uh, you know, morning drop off, typically, you don't have all the buses arriving at one time. Uh, there is a separate queuing car loop that goes all the way to back of the site loops around it. It provides an area of drop off, uh, so quite a bit of queuing for the cars separating that from the buses. And then in the evening, we believe that there's a number lane link here to queue up all the buses at one time for one dismissal, all the buses stacked in the exit lane. At that point, you just stop the car traffic, and all the buses pull out. It probably takes two or three minutes. If that exits out of the roadway, then you allow the parents who are picking up to to continue the process. Um, you know, as well as providing the extra parking, again, with the facility that incorporates pre-K. You're probably getting also a lot of parents that are parking, walking in, picking up the kids. So they chase into the parking to the lower grades, the paramount, for the parents actually walk their children into the school. Again, as Phil stated, this is a concept plan. This is a very tight site, but we feel that what you see here is a first brush is a huge improvement over your current condition where everything comes in, goes out one lane, buses, parents together. Um, it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
So what you're saying is buses and John Doe citizens are going to be coming through the same entrance to get to to where drop off the kids?
No, only the exit.
How the parents get in there and drop the kids?
They're coming in the current traffic.
And the buses are going to be coming in the new driveway? If this is the plan we go with? So what's going to stop the people from barbing in the in the parking lot and walking between the buses while they're trying to unload or load with their lights flashing and the school doesn't do a damn thing about it?
Uh, well, typically, again, real high-level concept, you see the yellow dash lines.
Yeah.
Typically, what you do in a case like this, where you have parent and bus drop off, is you have fences, and they can be nice ornamental fences planted that would funnel the people to those three positions. And typically, in school situations like this, you have monitors, people like that, that are stopping the traffic when the students are going across those specific sites. So you have raised areas, the buses wouldn't be there, the bus drivers are trained on traffic control, looking out for students. So again, it's it's a administrative operational issue, but we're showing that you're you're not just coming from the parking lot flooding across the fields. We're going to, you know, you would use, or the design professional, again, this is a concept plan. Design professionals typically would funnel the students to specific crossing points that lead to building entry points, and those would be monitored.
And it also gets law state of Connecticut for anybody to be moving when the school buses, if the red light's on here. I used to deliver food in the playing field area. I pulled into the school, the school buses were unloading in front of the school. I'm going to the back school. I got stopped and yelled at by the principal. He was going to back school, what buses were unloaded, and I wasn't even there. What's going to, how are we going to regulate this if we go with this plan? That's a problem. And just say, well, we'll have a fence. That's, I don't think that's going to be a duck. You got people walking through with bus lights now and driving to pick up their kids and running through the lights on the bus. That's against the law, period. Would you stake statues? And who's enforcing it? School's not. Years ago, it was Greg Hall down there, and he gave people holy hell everywhere. You don't have anybody to do that for doing it. Are you out there making sure cars aren't, when the buses are being loaded or or unloaded? No. I went and go for 33 years in this town. I know what I'm talking about. And where's where's going to be the access required for this concept?
That's design professional work. That's that's not concept.
You're still going to have to figure on it, just like you got to do to stop the people who drive around school when the school buses are in, period. And 50 feet off of 32, it's been here for, ever since I can remember, and never had it in school. I did 24 years, number one, quite early.
Hi, Mr. Cravannick. It sounds like you and your family have a unique perspective that is valuable and important, and you're coming up with questions that I myself haven't thought of just yet, so I appreciate your comments. And our of our engagement with our community is to hear your questions and also your ideas. So probably not right now, but maybe in the future, we might have some recommendations about some of these things that I'm certain that our community will be open to hearing back from you and anyone else who has some ideas to help with some of these problems.
White House.
I'll go ahead and charge that. Thank you.
All right, I have one more from Mr. Tella. Are we going to have cost, whatever we're going to do at Center? If we move away from it, available so people know what that is before picking an option? Um, I think we discussed this as a committee, the Mordecai's discuss this. The answer is not necessarily. The town will have to determine what we would use, what we would do with that property, whether we keep the building, um, repurpose it for another use, sell it, or demolish it. Those are yet to be determined uses.
So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight.
I just was asking, our first select woman, um, where those conversations will be had and how people can watch that again to learn more.
So right now, the Mordecai, what we discuss on Monday is, and you'll hear me talk about this at our next regular meeting, is having those discussions be part of our public engagement to get some real feedback from residents because we feel it's a broader conversation than the three of us at the table making a decision. Um, this is kind of important. So we'll start with these presentations. So I look forward to seeing many more people and their comments on that, uh, potential repurpose of Center School and potentially possible, depending on what choice we move with.
This is so important, and of course, we, I don't think we have this big a crowd here. I know we do online um, as we had hoped for, and especially with you guys doing all this work from the beginning. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, if you have your budget, like a way to do sort of a postcard schedule of the of the subsequent events that the public is encouraged to come to, because I just feel like people, a lot of people might be missing the steps, and then they're going to be lost as we sort of, I know you guys have done a lot of thought about this, so I hope this isn't annoying, but I'm thinking something they can put on their fridge and know, I got in high school that night, or, you know, I got in, cancel a rehearsal, which one of the people did, you know, so is there a possibility we did it now?
Can I answer that? So at our last meeting, we talked about future items for the agenda. Uh, so next Wednesday, when we meet in our next regular meeting, I specifically asked that we map out what our community engagement looks like so that people can plan it, so that they can know, so that we can hear from as many stakeholders as possible with as much information as possible. Also, they can't make one, they can make another, um, and or come to all of them, and hopefully get answers to the questions they need to help us make a decision to bring to the community. Thank you. Again, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I look forward to hearing more from the community about future uh events that we're going to be discussing in our next meeting, and I think I moved to adjourn. So all in favor of adjourned this meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need aye. Sentenced. All right, this meeting is adjourned. It is now 9:22.